To call to order the. Thank you. I would like to call to order the Get Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, March 16th, 2023. The time is 3:05 PM. And I will do a roll call. Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Storseth, I think is joining us online. I'll announce him when he arrives. Councilmember Runberg?
Here.
Councilmember Lichten? Here. Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
And Councilmember Barber?
Here.
Okay, great. So our first discussion item is our Arts Commission Appointee Introductions. Happy to have with us Kathy Dickens, Emily Cosmith, and Lea. Lea, I'm gonna get your last name wrong.
Basile Lazarus.
Basile Lazarus. Thank you so much. I wanna say Basil every time.
That's okay.
Basile Lazarus. So if I could just have you either stand if you're comfortable, if not, you can stay where you're seated. I'll throw Kathy. She just wanna take a minute and just introduce herself.
Obviously, we're not in college. Trying to talk to the owl. Talk to the owl. There you go. The owl is listening.
Yes. I'm Kathy Dickens. So I am born and raised entrepreneur, also craftsman, Duggerball and Master of Nothing. And so I've been doing that for a long time, just making crafting things. And then in '21, during COVID, I thought, well, my items are successful, the time acrimated, but we're better together. So I collaborated with local people that were making things. I stalked them on Facebook, found them, said, let's do a pop-up together, because everything was online at the time. And we did. We had, in one week pop-up, we had a thousand people. So, and it was awesome. From there, we collaborated, reached out to the public. We ended up steering markets. Penn Met did that first. We had 15 makers. It astounded us. Two years later, we're about to celebrate our two-year anniversary. And again, we have nearly 100 members. We're just getting signed up for this year. And we offer really just community for fellow makers. That's really what it is. And then my role is to create and organize opportunities for these people to go from their living room out into the public with those things they're passionate about and talented with. And so we do that in some local retail. We do it with markets. And then we also offer them, we collaborate with the community to create small business workshops. So we'll have people donate their time to build small business skills into these folks that are members. So I'm excited to be here.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And then next is Emily Cosmith.
So my name's Emily Cosmith. My husband and I started our own architecture practice. I say, what are you still? But we haven't actually got it jump-started until this past year. We have a little five-year-old girl, and we've been kind of waiting for her to go to school full-time so that we can dedicate more of our time to our company. So now's kind of that time. And so we specialize in custom residential architecture. And, you know, there is a lot of overlap with the work that we do. And we take inspiration from, you know, landscapes and art and just kind of different disciplines. And it all kind of intermixes to the work that we do with building dwellings for families. And it's really about how, you know, someone will interact with an object or a landscape, or, you know, it's how these two kind of go together. And so it really touches on architecture and art and all these other different types of discipline. And so it really interested me to think that we should be involved more in the community and on the side of art, especially since, you know, coming from, when we see my daughter like interact with some of the public art that we see already, it's very inspiring to see that. And I'd love to be more involved with how to get the younger community, as well as, you know, everyone from different ages and backgrounds could be involved. And so it's, yeah, we just wanted to become more involved in the community on that side as well.
Great. Thank you so much. And then Lea Basile Lazarus.
There you go. It's always a hard one. I'm Lea Basile Lazarus. I moved here two and a half years ago from Chicago, a very cold place. I'm excited to be here. And moving here, I'm a retired art teacher. I decided I wanted to be part of the community, the art community. So I dove right in. I'm part of Gallery Row down in the harbor. I'm secretary of the Get Harbor Open Studio Tour. I'm a member of PAL. I'm part of the screening committee of the gallery and for PAL. And so this is a really great opportunity for me to share my knowledge of art and artists that are here. And hopefully, I'll be a great addition to the commission.
See. Thank you so much. Any comments from council or from these three folks?
I was just gonna say, thank you for serving and stepping up. And you bring some diverse perspectives.
Agreed. Welcome. Thank you. So moving on to Arts Commission Appointee Introductions, we have Louise Teeman and Justin Tierling. And Louise, if you'd like to go first.
Hi, I'm Louise Teeman, and this is going to be my second stint on the Parks Commission, which makes me happy. And I started with Parks 20 years ago with a 10-year stint on the Chinese Recitation Park Board down on the Reston Way waterfront, but then directly into seven years of very active community participation to build Ansich. And the important lesson of Ansich is why I'm on the Parks Commission. That it had its contentious moments, right? You have very different needs between the community, the neighbors, the community paddlers, the team, the fisher folk, and the city's planning commission rules and the budget. And so everybody has different needs. Now I look at the park and I think it could not have been as good as it is if all of those people had not had seven years to us about their positions.
That's great for something.
And because it isn't a two-story building. It doesn't block the view. It does serve the needs of able-bodied and handicapped or disabled paddlers. It does have room for the fisher folk. What a great collaboration. That if any one of us had dominated, and any one of those groups had dominated, it would not have turned out as good as it did. So immediately following that, this Parks Commission opportunity came up, and I took it. Because I think that the, that parks have their ecological function to preserve open spaces, to keep those fish moving upstream, provide diversity in the environment. It also builds community. There is no question that parks are places for people too, for activities, for events. We all get to experience those. And now we're gonna start this master planning process for Crescent Park, the oldest park in the city. We're gonna do this thing over again, right? Different needs, communities, preschoolers, all kinds of people are going to have opinions about what that park could be. And the park commission role of helping to take in that input and figure out, is it equitable? Is it, what are we doing? What's good? What are all the possibilities? All of them. And then what ones really are gonna make this particular park at this particular time the right space for the next 50 years? And what a, what a great responsibility that is and a pleasure to commit to the community in that way. So thank you for the opportunity to spend three more years on the commission. And I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you so much. Justin?
Thank you. My name is Justin Tierling, and I'd like to just say I agree with everything Louise just said. I'm really excited to be here. I've lived in the harbor for about three or four years now. And my first foray into civic participation was in 2021. I got a Creative Endeavors grant to do a community mental health project that seemed to go pretty well, called Nose Away From Home, where we had a little treasure hunt going in the city parks in the better part of the year. It was a lot of fun, and it got me really excited for my passion for bringing people together and honoring the spaces that we have. And I just, when I saw this came up, I knew that I have a left turn as far as being a Parks Commissioner goes. But I feel very strongly about stewardship as a civic value. And I'm just really excited to have any role whatsoever in this process with just helping care for our parks and care for the needs of the people that utilize our public spaces. And I also should say, I'm just, I'm really happy with any part of that work, whether it's, you know, digging up invasive species, getting money, or working on policy stuff. I kind of have an eclectic mix of experiences I bring to the table. I founded the Occupational Therapy Department at Western State Hospital, managed that for a year. So I have some experience at the state-level bureaucracy and that kind of thing. I know it's vastly different than here, but there are some parallels. So I enjoy the policy side of things. I enjoy the getting outside part of things. And look forward to hopefully also interacting with members of the public too, because I think that would be very satisfying.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments from council? Kenny?
Yes. Well, welcome to everybody. And, you know, arts and parks where you go together sometimes. So it's pretty exciting to have five of you here. And I'm sure you're doing a great job. So thanks for doing this.
Thank you all again. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. And you certainly don't have to. We would understand if you don't, if you have other things to get to. So thank you all for being here.
That's so much work.
I really appreciate you guys. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so our next item of business is the Get Harbor Yacht Club Junior Sail Program presentation. Happy to have Jones Burkin, the Junior Sail Program Director. And if you could, please introduce your team.
Oh, good afternoon. Yeah, we have board members here that maybe I'll ask them to go ahead and introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Ashley Nelson. I am the Senate Director for GHRC Junior Sails. So I am a non-voting member of the board, but I'm also a full-time employee.
I'm Kathleen Carlson. I'm the Assistant Director, and I help where, in terms of technology and wherever else I need to help out.
I'm Pete Clement, and I am responsible for the grant process as well as solid on purchasing and outside funding. Been a part of the group since June and enjoy volunteering. Having a good time doing that.
I'm Greg Buxama. He's been here eight months. I've been with the group eight years. My son was in the program. He aged out a while ago. Not sure why I'm still doing this, other than it's so much fun watching the kids out there in the harbor sailing around and laughing and giggling and tipping their boats over on purpose. And it's been an amazing journey to watch how the program has just exploded over the time that we've been around doing it. So I help with the medical stuff. I'm a physician by training. I deal with personnel issues. And I am leading the charge to obtaining a long-term facility for our program, going into perpetuity, hopefully.
Great.
We'd just like to thank Mayor and City Council for all they do, their dedication and positive hard work in our community, our wonderful Get Harbor community, seeing the arts and Parks people here. It's just amazing. And also specifically thank Mayor Markley, Trina Newsen, Jeff Langham, and Jennifer Harrell, who have been meeting with us and encouraging us. Thank you so much. Seeing our first slide here. This afternoon, we're gonna share with you the amazing 14-year journey that we've had. And we are going to invite you at the end to join us. Have you seen those little boats with the sails around Get Harbor? Sailing's a unique experience. I think in your sacks, you'll find a little sailboat. Not the most crafty person, but just to give you an idea, sailboat has sails and keel and rudder. Doesn't have paddles or an engine. So it's a unique way to be on the water. How many of you have been on a sailboat? Great. All right. So you know what we're talking about. We'd like to start by sharing a video that explains a little bit about the program.
We don't have any audio, Josh.
So Ashley, why don't you narrate?
Now we have audio. Okay, well, this is me in the summertime. And I'm talking a lot here about kind of the cycle of our program. So one of the things that we, this is very, like, seeing myself, I'm looking at all of you. The cycle of the program, these kids come in, and for the majority of our sailors, they have never been in a sailboat before. So they come in on Monday, and on Monday, they do their capsize test. And it's like, oh, they're nervous. They've never done it before. They tip the boat over. And then Monday afternoon, whoa, more stress. They're sailing a boat by themselves for the first time. And to watch these kids go through this process where they come in and they're doing something that's totally foreign to them. And then by Friday, they're operating a boat by themselves, right? So that confidence building and growth in kids is really why we do what we do. And we do that all the way through up into adulthood. So a lot of kids come into our program as youth sailors. They come back year after year for camp. Then they come up and do the race team program. And then a lot of them come back as junior instructors and volunteer. So they're picking up leadership skills and teaching skills and employment skills. And then eventually, we hire them as our staff. So the majority of people running the camps are just really invested in the program, coming back because it's this space, this magical place where they built confidence and learned to sail and all of those memories that they have with their teammates and their coworkers, you know, keep them coming back year to year. So it's really, I encourage you to drop by if you're around during the summers. I know a lot of people like to go exploring on their own boats. But if you're around during the summer, I encourage you to drop by. It's a really cool thing to see in action, to see the kids out putting it together.
Thank you very much, Ashley.
I think that's the majority of what the video is.
Josh, I see you unmuted. Did?
Yeah, I can try that video again. I think, I think I've figured out what the problem is, if you want me to go back.
Okay. That was great narration, though. Yeah, you can see if I, if I got most of the points from the video. I think, I think. Thank you, Josh. I think the owl is having a hard time figuring out the sound here.
We try to get, make it out every year. And then kids are here for a week at a time. We'll get kids though that come, you know, three, four weeks of their summer and spend their time with them. So it's pretty fun. It's, you know, it's a great way to spend our time, for sure. Something that's really special about our program and then also about the sport is that it builds the confidence in kids that they didn't know was there. If they do something that for a lot of them is completely foreign and really scary the first day, and then by the end of the week, they're, they're operating their own vehicle eventually, you know, confidently. And it's such a cool transformation to watch this go through, you know, working without fear and kind of building that self-esteem and confidence as they push through that and kind of experience that success. So, and that, for me, is all the way up through, right? So we have kids that learn to sail in our program, and then they come, join the race team. Then they'll start junior instructing, volunteering, building skills with leading a group or kind of taking charge of a chopper or a drill. And then all the way up into instructing. So all of our staff are people that kind of learn how to do what they're doing here. And thank God for another little box down there.
We'd like to start with, where we began. Many of you may not be familiar. We're kind of the quiet, quiet group in the harbor. But we started in 2010, a group from Get Harbor Yacht Club. Spot had this dream of, let's get a sailing program for kids. And they did tremendous work, formed a 501(c)(3). Even though we have yacht club in the name, it's not a part of the yacht club. We get no funds from the yacht club. They got donated safety boats. We purchased sailing dinghies. And then we got those FJs donated, another program. We don't want them anymore. So yes, we'll take them. The Marina Space was also donated by the Sterns family, and we're most grateful to that at West Shore. And then that first summer, we had 40 kids and thought that was great. But those first summers were pretty rough financially. We barely could make payroll. But the parents and the kids were so excited. It was that energy that just kept us going. And we started the motto, it's for the kids, which we continue that motto today. So where we are now. Next slide. Last summer, we had over 600 kids in sail camp. Robust scholarship program. We have a race team, two full-time staff, Ashley and Nico Tola is our Assistant Director. And three-quarters of a million in assets. We have a great fundraising program as well as partnerships. Next slide, please. So junior sail is actually two programs. It's the sail camp where the kids come and learn to sail in the summer. And then we also have race team. And that's every month except December and January. Next slide, please. So sail camp, just to give you an overview of that, is introduces kids to sailing and basic boating skills. They start at beginner and at all age levels. And usually have to take a couple of weeks of sail camp to learn the skills. And then they can move on to intermediate. And if they choose, they can go on to race team. Next slide, please. So this is a graph showing how our growth has just evolved. In 2015, we had 86 kids, just couldn't get over that 100th level. And then all of a sudden, it, we took off. And so this summer, we'll have a capacity of 722 kids. Next slide, please. And then there's sail camp, and then race team is the second part of our program. And this is the narrowest race team because we combined with Tacoma Yacht Club, finding a name that would be inclusive of all both locations. So this is our city team. In the fall and spring, they sail by their high schools. And we have three high schools that have become involved, Bellarmine, Charles Wright, and Get Harbor High School. And we're working with other schools, hoping to expand to other schools and Get Harbor and Tacoma. Next slide, please. So on race team, you can see the participation overall, high school. And then the newest one is the yellow line, the OPTI. And that's just a really exciting new program, and younger kids, and parents are involved. And parents are, have to be involved in the whole program. They're hauling boats on trailers around the northwest for competitions. So a lot of parent involvement. And both Ashley and Nico are coaching as well. Next slide, please. So Ashley's taught us that there's a circle to keep sail camps, which is the major fundraiser for us, to have enough staff for those 700 kids we're gonna have this summer. We have to start off with kids in sail camp, then we move on to, hopefully, they'll go on to race team. And then when they're 14, they can volunteer for a week of sail camp as a, we call them junior instructors. I think that's pretty great. And then move on to become a US Sail certified instructor. And then we hope they'll stay on for, to be lead instructors and race coaches. This is our group from last year, just amazing group of young people as instructors. So how do we run this huge program? We buy all the boats and the equipment. We wanted all kids to have access. So when my kids were in the program, they're 40s now, you had to buy your own boats. And it was just not equal. So I thought, if I ever get to be in the sailing program, I'm gonna make sure that the kids, we have, provide the boats. So the sail camp income is our main income, but that's not enough to run the program. We also have to raise money in other ways. So the auction is a huge thing. Every fall, that's our only fundraiser. All these volunteers come together for a spaghetti dinner auction. Greg's wife has been a major organizer on that. And last fall raised 120, over 120,000, which blew us out of the water. We couldn't believe that. We also have a board member who accepts boats and other equipment, and then he'll flip it. And that, those funds go to the sail program. And then sometimes we have donations, money. One man stood up at the auction and said, I don't know anything about this program, but it sounds like a really good program for kids, and I'm all about kids. I'd like to buy a $20,000 sailboat for the program. So I thought, oh, my God. So it's, yeah. And then Pete, working on grants in 2023 this year. You can see the total that we'll have in grants coming in, which is huge contribution to the program as well. Next slide, please. Another part of the program that we take a lot of pride in is scholarships. Usually in the past several years, we've had about $10,000 to give out in scholarships. Our last auction was so successful that we had $23,000 in scholarships to give out. And we've already given out that amount. So we're working on a few other areas, including the LTAC grant that we received from the city. And we'll use that for scholarships as well, which we so appreciate. Next slide, please. The part of our group that is these people sitting right here that really touch my heart. Those folks up there run this amazing program. And I'm not a numbers person. There's so many things that I can't do. But everybody on the board has the skills of keeping our fleet going, which is huge. One of our board members just works year-round repairing boats and engines. The shed there, we needed a shed for storage. I was gonna go to Home Depot and buy a shed. And the board said, no, 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 no. We're going to build that shed. It's gonna be cheaper and it's gonna be better. So that's what they did. And that's the beautiful shed we have. So our board goes out in the middle of the night. If something needs repairing, or we have to get something, that was a middle-of-the-night run. So, and the last two photos are the auction. You might notice that man on the right there. Greg was a phenomenal auctioneer. Did just a great job. On the left, you'll see the kids serving spaghetti dinner that was made by Mike Tenney from Suzanne's Bakery. He comes, did volunteers to do that. My sister-in-law and her friends run the galley. So that's all volunteer. It's just an amazing celebration of the program as well as a fundraiser. Next slide, please. And the partnerships. We mentioned the Sterns Family Foundation, which contributes to the docks and property down there. We also have a partnership with Tacoma Yacht Club. Several years ago, we got a call that they had no volunteers to run their program. And they announced to their membership that they would no longer have a program. And we partner with them. We use their property and their boats. And our board said, we'll have to tell half the kids coming that they can't come. And they said, that's unacceptable. So how about if our board runs Tacoma's program? And I was like, could we do that? And they said, yep, we sure can. So now we run Tacoma Yacht Club's program as well as Get Harbor's program. And their program is located in Walachette Bay. Penn Met Parks allows us to store boats at the old Peninsula Gardens in one of the greenhouses out there. We've done that for several years. And that's huge, because that's also where we repair boats. Get Harbor Yacht Club allows us to use their facility for meetings and our auction with no charge. The Boys and Girls Club, that's what, some of that scholarship money that we got at our auction last year. Our staff has. Our, our staff has pursued a partnership with Boys and Girls Club of Puget Sound. They're going to provide buses to bring kids out here to Westshore. We're, we're closing down that to other kids. And it's just going to be kids from Boys and Girls Club. And their counselors will come with them, will provide boats and instruction. So this is a brand-new something we're, and we're just thrilled to be able to reach these underserved youth. And in the past, we've had a partnership with Harbor Wild Watch, but we ran out of space this year, which is part of our, why we're here today. And so we hope to resume that partnership with Harbor Wild Watch, which has been tremendous in the past. Next slide, please. So our current facilities are on the water. At Westshore Marina, you can see the docks down below with all the little boats. That's where we go and tow them out into Gig Harbor. And is everybody familiar with Westshore Marina? Okay, it's down the quarter there. And then on Willatchit Bay, this is the outstation for Tacoma Yacht Club to the right of this. And then they allow us to use, we use their docks and then some upland space as well. Next slide, please. And then this is the Penmet Parks property at the old Peninsula Gardens, the greenhouse on the left and the parking lot on the right, where we store trailers. Next slide, please. So one of the, the, we have met all our goals. We've set goals every year. And the one we haven't set is that long-term facility that Greg is, is leading the charge on. The Sterns family allows us to use their, their docks year-to-year. But our, so far have not given us anything beyond that. Tacoma Yacht Club, we have a three-year agreement and we're in year two of that. But at any time, they could say, "Now we've decided we're not going to allow you to use the property on Willatchit." So in order for our program to go forward, we really need a home for the program that's permanent, that provides stability, allows for growth, and so we can continue the community partnerships. Next slide, please. So we want to share with you today the three options that we are presently looking at. We're not ready to make decisions yet, but we thought it would be appropriate to share with you what we're looking at so far. Westshore, where we already are, we have existing relationships. We know the place. It's been fine. There are limitations. We do instruction in a parking lot, which is always dicey as cars and all are going through. And sometimes the tenants aren't always really excited to have these kids down there with all their energy and enthusiasm. But, but it has worked. So that's one of the limitations. Next slide. Second property that we're looking at is the ground property. It's near the waterfront end and to the left is the shoreline as well. It's privately owned. Greg's been in touch with the owners and they're very interested. They love the Junior Sail program. They'd love for us to buy it. It's got that gorgeous deep-water dock. So it would be fabulous. The challenge is zone residential. And also, we have to follow the new CIPA requirements as well. It's also real pricey.
Is this the one that has a resale sign on it right now?
Yes.
Does it, it has a resale sign on it right now with the suggested home that you can get for the low price though?
Is it three and a half now?
It was five or so.
So that's the second property we're looking at. Next slide, please. And then the city came to us with, Dr. Lee has some property that he is all about kids. And he said, "Is there a kids program that would like to use this property?" Like, oh, my gosh, I just dropped from heaven. The strength is the owner's interested and to work with us. And Greg's been in touch with him as well. There's a house, there's a net shed, and then there's docks that go on forever. The challenge is, you could see, the docks are in pretty disrepair. Next slide, please. So what we'd like to do is... What's that?
I said, "Do we, with a slide more?" Were we going to...
Well, not quite yet.
Okay.
So I think what we're, we're just wanted to present today was where we are. A little bit about where we've been, where we are now, and what we're looking at in the future. And we need to do some homework. We need to pursue each of those properties and find out what will be the best fit for sale. At that, at a later date, we hope to come back to council and we'll probably make at least one ask. And that is the possibility of partnership with the city. And, and maybe being able to have dual use of the property with the city and with Junior Sail. And possibly ask for zoning changes is the other possibility. So Josh, should we try that video, see if it's going to work?
The sailing is extremely fun. They make this, they have great games, great courses. You get free clubs, win times. They teach you everything about, that you need to know about sailing.
Been a fabulous talk. The, the kids have had a wonderful week. Every night they come home telling great stories of what not to learn, packing, having fun with other friends and being exhausted and shooting well. And then excited to get up next morning and go sail again. Been great.
We know what they were saying.
So in closing, last summer, a parent wrote us that it's not an exaggeration to say that Junior Sail saved my daughter's mental health during, coming out of COVID. After a year at home, she was scared to leave the house. We nudged her to try Sail Camp. And though terrified, she managed to do it and loved it. Then she joined Race Team. In a world where tweens and teens struggle to find their identities, she has found a community of black-minded kids who are outside the mainstream while also learning teamwork, physics, and the environment. Thank you so much for allowing us the time today to present our journey. And we hope at a later date, you may choose to join in and be part of the laughter and the joy that Junior Sail provides on the waters of Gukka. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have just a few minutes, but I do want to allow time for council questions.
Yeah, I have two state, two questions to the statement. The statement is that when that video didn't work the first time, it was probably pretty appropriate because the most beautiful thing I find about sailing is there's no noise. There's no drone of an engine. You're just slicing through the water and it's really beautiful. So that was appropriate. Secondly, the question about the Lee dock, Lee property dock. Is that, you said the dock needs repair, but is it safe enough to use now and be prepared at some future date?
It's presently being used by the new kayak group. They have permission, I believe, to also use that. So I would think so.
And the other question is that the Race Team, are they specialized boats? Their Race Team has.
Yeah, so they sail one design. So depending on the time of year and the age of the kids, the high school team usually is primarily FJs, which were in the videos. That's what we run our teen classes in. And then the OPTI is for the younger kids, the kind of normal boat. In the summer, they get to do more technical boats. We travel a little bit further, bigger water, longer races. So they get the C-420 with the spidigger and trapeze and then the laser as well.
So the, the boats are appropriate to the class that they're racing in?
Exactly.
And when I was a kid, I used to sail a little Cabot's down in Southern California.
Savits?
Savits.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I don't want to take your time here, but I got an actual story about that boat. And California, because I think quite a few of the staff are sailors.
Cool.
Very nice presentation. Thank you.
Councilor Henderson?
Yeah, thanks. Again, echo, very good presentation, good service. Can you explain a little bit, maybe amplify a bit on your scholarship program and how you find kids? Do they have to be from Gig Harbor within the city limits? Or how do you, how do you expand it to make a more diverse crew of folks out there?
Yeah, so that, I, my background is in public education. So I taught in a lot of low-income schools before I came into this position full-time. So I definitely came in very motivated to diversify the sport and get as many, as much access as we can to the sport for kids and reduce those barriers. There are a few ways we've done that. The first thing I did was call the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, asked them, "How do you use your scholarship program work? How do we reduce barriers?" They got me set up with a matrix. So it's all objective to decide, you know, if your family, based on family size and income, should qualify. And then they said to put the scholarship application online, which has helped tremendously because again, reducing that barrier. If you don't have a printer, it's hard for you to print something and fill it out and then scan it and then send it. But the barrier we're still really battling is transportation. I would say about half of our scholarship students are from this side of the bridge and then the other half, and this is true for the whole program, about half of our students are coming across the bridge every day. So that's the Boys and Girls Club relationship. That's why we're so excited about that because that's a, reducing those barriers for kids by providing the transportation. So we're excited. Hopefully that will, you know, that will work out long-term and it's something we can build off of.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Councilor Wood?
Yes, is this your first year working with Boys and Girls Club?
Yes.
It is, yeah. We've had kind of ongoing conversations with them over the past few years, but it's the first year it's come together and we're, we're excited to move forward on it.
Oh, that's great. Well, it'll be interesting to hear our goes.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I think the Boys and Girls Clubs have buses, don't they? Or vans and things? So that might help get some of those kids over here. But yeah, thanks for doing this and thanks for the presentation.
Is there another?
Yes.
And one, I wanted to say thank you for all this. And I just think about kind of reflecting back where we were going when he was a young person, what he was doing. I think about when I was a younger person and just how some of these programs were truly life-saving, really, it sounds like. And hearing so many kids really struggling through what happened with COVID and being isolated and when is the time to be safe, et cetera. And I just commend you for having this program that is something so different. It's nothing in the schools, right? It's not that you have to be able to swing a baseball or throw a football or jump on a trapeze. I mean, it really offers something very different. It's physical, you're out there in fresh air. It's silent, it's fun. So congratulations to all of you. What an exciting, I must just love getting up every morning and going doing everything.
It's great. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much. And we were able to stay open during COVID, which was wonderful too, because we're outdoors. So, yeah.
And Greg was very instrumental in this.
Yeah, having a discussion on the board.
Yeah, in fact, our model ended up being a model that other organizations used because we were so successful during COVID and how we did it.
And no infections.
Yay!
That's exceptional.
It is really.
That is really, that's really cool. I mean, I just, you're going to get seven hundred kids this year, right? Wow.
Like six fifty in the evening.
We average, I think about, the last couple of years, about ninety-five percent of our slots have been full. And I know in the last couple of years, we've ended up with twenty to thirty people on waitlist that were not able to fill slots for. So one of the things that's very interesting the last couple of years is that the day we go live, we literally had thirty people, thirty kids signed up because people wait for it. Literally say, "What day are you going on live?" She sends a little email out and boom, we have that many kids waiting to get into this program.
And what date does, it starts in June, you said?
Yeah, so we start usually a week before the public schools get out. And we have a lot of private school families that are a little earlier. So I think it's the second week of June this year. Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you all as well for what you're doing in the community. It's huge. And, you know, I think that keeping young and old minds active and engaged is good. And I think the multi-generational, taking advantage of some of the sailing expertise and letting people connect and keep the kids, you know, engaged is so important to our, to your community. So thank you.
I think one of the things, I don't know if you realize, is that we start at six. So it's really interesting because I'm, I'm very excited about my grandson. Appreciate it. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you for the recognition.
The, the mayor had to step out on a call with her senator. And so she obviously really appreciates you being here as well. Mayor Protem, a five-minute break could be in order?
Yes, please.
Council's okay with that?
Yes.
And I, I made cookies for all of you in your bags, but I didn't want the rest of you to be left out. So there's cookies here.
Welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, March sixteenth, 2023. It is four thirty, four oh two PM. We've returned from break. I am, we're going to move item, item number five and six discussion items up, or I'm sorry, up ahead of code enforcement and put code enforcement at the end. And so I actually am going to turn the meeting over to Mayor Protem Lycan. And so she will introduce our next presenter. And then I will be joining the meeting again shortly.
Great, thank you. So next up is the Support for Wastewater Nutrient Modeling. Our presentation is by Public Works, Jeff Wayne.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Some of this may come familiar to some of you, nutrient modeling. But we're taking a little bit deeper dive into this. Hopefully you had a chance to look at some of the web links that we provided in today's memo. But for the past decade or more, the State Department of Ecology has been working with treatment plant operators, including ourselves. And they've been working through some legal challenges that have been brought on to the State Food Department of Ecology related to nutrient discharging into the Puget Sound. Specifically, it's related to nitrogen that's being discharged into the Puget Sound through many sources. The State Department of Ecology is looking to define the impacts of those nutrients and then identify what the next steps the state would be doing to respond to those impacts to the nutrients. And I'm going to share my screen here real quick, what comes up. This is an image that you might have seen if you looked to the Department of Ecology's website. Department of Ecology has been focused on wastewater treatment plants. That's what they can regulate. And so they put together a nutrient general permit for what they call what treatment plants, loaders, who are those entities that load nutrients into the Puget Sound and the Southern Saly Sea. So this is what they have identified. This is who they've been talking to. This is who has a nutrient general permit. We are on there. We received our nutrient general permit back in December of last year, December first of last year. That has established how much nitrogen the city's treatment plant can release into the Puget Sound on a daily basis. The intent of this permit, of course, was to improve the health of the Puget Sound by removing the nutrients that go into the Puget Sound. Again, those nutrients come from many sources. They come from treatment plants. They come from all freshwater streams, creeks, rivers that discharge into the Puget Sound. The end result is, and you may have seen this from when I gave a presentation back in December of, why is it on my, I'm changing the page. Sorry. I'm not sure, why am I, you do that over here? Okay. So this, this is just a map showing dissolved oxygen levels in the Puget Sound from two thousand and six. It was the minimum level. So I'm guessing this was probably in the August, September timeframe. That's when we use it, the lowest dissolved oxygen. Nutrients eat up the dissolved oxygen. All the critters that are called Puget Sound home need dissolved oxygen to breathe. And so there's competition. Critters need to breathe and nutrients that are degrading. And those nutrients that need, that are... And those nutrients that need, that are degrading take up the oxygen. And so you can see from Ecology's maps that this is where they're identifying. And you can see the dissolved oxygen levels are, the red are the bad, the really high dissolved oxygen. Where, where we're having problems. And so in order for us to move past this, we have been working with Ecology to get this nutrient general permit. But we've also been working with Puget Sound Clean Water Alliance and the University of Washington through their Salish Sea Model and also what they call the Puget Sound Institute, that works with the Salish Sea Model, to identify where nutrient sources are coming from. And this is a rough overview of what they're looking at through the Puget Sound Institute's model. In here, you don't just see the nutrient loaders that Ecology's looking at, which are treatment plants. You're also seeing the inflows from the watersheds, the streams, the creeks, the rivers. The Puget Sound Institute is modeling these. They started their modeling process and they have made some good progress on it. Right now, they've completed the Northern Bay, Georgia Northern Bay's basin. They're just about ready to complete the modeling for the Woodby Basin. And then they're gonna move to the next four basins. I don't, I'm not sure how much money they've spent so far on those other two basins. But in order to finish the last four basins, they're looking at about $500,000 to finish that model. Each basin needs to, in order to be calibrated, they need to take about seven model runs. Some of them, depending on the basins, inlets and everything else, it's less. But it's about seven runs per basin to run the model. And so you, let's just do four basins times seven runs. That's 28 runs of the model to get it calibrated and that's the $500,000. Now, one thing I haven't shown you here because King County kind of sits on its own. You can imagine where King County sits in between the Woodby and the main basin there. King County is working with Puget Sound Institute to do their own separate modeling. So if you see point discharges here, you may say, well, what's a huge amount of discharges that are missing from the King County areas? Because we're, for our discussion today, kind of ignoring them because they're working with U-Dub on their own modeling. But they merge together. It's not like we ignore, when we run our model runs, we ignore King Counties and vice versa. They all run together. So the city is working, we're, we're on the Puget Sound Clean Water Alliance. We are spending some of our funds to pay for this modeling. I'm not here to ask for money, not here to, we've talked about through budget and we announced to afford it, the cost of modeling, this is very low. You may think, well, those are big numbers. But there's a lot of bigger fish in this basin that pay much bigger fees than we do. So our part, in my opinion, is very low and very acceptable. But where we are now is we are working with Corolla Engineers. We've had a contract with them for approaching a year now. They are helping us optimize our treatment plant, look for ways to optimize our treatment plant, to reduce the amount of nutrients that make their way out of the treatment plant. They're also helping us keep up with all of our general nutrient permit requirements to keep us in good graces with Ecology. You're going to be hearing from Corolla Engineers and our wastewater staff about how we're proceeding and what we're doing specifically, what we're looking at for nutrient optimization at an upcoming study session, probably by the end of April, the first part of May. So you'll hear a little bit more about this. But my point here tonight is just to talk about the Puget Sound Institute's modeling and to talk about what we, what we're doing with this group. Because you may have never heard about this Puget Sound Institute before. But we, we are involved with them. We do hope to have all of the modeling completed by the early part of 2024, maybe going into 2024. And we just enjoy and appreciate council support to continue to be on that team for the Puget Sound Institute, to have the modeling performed, use the science that's best available to identify who's involved in this. Because what this is gonna lead to is we, treatment plant operators, accept that we do load the Puget Sound with nutrients, but the question is, how much is treatment plants and who else should be responsible? But right, because right now Ecology is just looking at treatment plants, is trying to solve the whole problem. We know that that is not going to be the solution. We need to have, bring everybody together.
Jeff, what other things besides flow coming out of the treatment plant causes? So I'm thinking maybe fertilizers from people's yards running, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, fertilizers, whether that's from people's yards or from large farming operations or just dairy operations and those kinds of things. It's, it's, yeah. It's a lot of biodegrading of organics and, and the nutrients that are put into the systems, the rivers. Right now, in the Northern Bay and the Woodby Basins, what I'm hearing from the Puget Sound Institute is that it's like a one-third, two-thirds maybe, one-third treatment plants or less, maybe. It might be closer to a quarter. And most of it though, majority of the nutrients are coming from these other streams, creeks and rivers. Councilor Robert?
So I would anticipate, thinking about that, that if we're going to try to control those nutrients, we have to figure out eventually, who is the upstream cause on those fresh, freshwater streams? And how are we going to be, I mean, we can identify the amount that's coming from here and there, but how are we going to figure out that it's, okay, my brother's farm on a creek that's doing it? You know, I think that's the real challenge.
Oh, it absolutely is. And the intent of this modeling isn't to pinpoint it as to where those other nutrients are coming from based on the watershed inputs. It's more to identify, okay, for Ecology's point of view, because Ecology's not doing this modeling. It's this independent group. You can look at treatment plants all you want and you can say, reduce your nitrogen input levels, but we're only gonna get you very, so far.
Yeah.
If you really want to take down the nitrogen in Puget Sound, you gotta look elsewhere.
So on that same point, are we proposing any sampling of our own to kind of pinpoint this? I mean, nitrogen sampling isn't that expensive, obviously you've got labor doing it, but.
Oh, we do nitrogen sampling all the time.
But that's at the wastewater treatment plant. I'm talking to other places like.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because again, probably a large source of nutrient loading outside of the wastewater treatment plant would be people's lawns. I mean, everybody fertilizes their lawn, you do. And it gets into our storm drains and then it goes into the holding ponds. And I don't know how much then goes through that. Some of it breaks down clearly, but some of it doesn't. And, you know, those, those houses that directly, you know, I don't think anybody goes into a holding lawn. I don't know. I guess it's something that if Department of Ecology eventually comes up with levels that are pretty low for the wastewater treatment plants, that's gonna be a large cost to us, which it should be. But I'm afraid that if they were to start sampling streams in the air and say, well, you guys haven't done enough and we're really kind of sunk. So I think it's a bigger topic and I think it's gonna be coming because we can't be loading the Puget Sound with nitrogen or anything else, actually.
Councilor Wood?
Yes. So are they modeling in the bay right here in Gig Harbor? Are they taking samples or are they doing air?
They are, I, I don't have a, if I, I can't zoom in very much to this image here. I can do a little bit, but it wouldn't do a whole lot of good because it would be pixelated. But they, to my knowledge, they're not modeling in, from Crescent Creek or Donkey Creek. They haven't told me they're modeling from there. I don't, we don't have the data. We're not producing the data from Crescent Creek or Donkey Creek for nutrient loading.
Something that we need to probably reach out.
So they're just looking at wastewater treatment plants, but, but is that correct?
They're looking at more than just wastewater treatment plants, but they're not looking at every stream or creek that I, I don't believe that enters the Puget Sound.
I mean, there's a lot of septic tank failures.
Yeah.
There are. Yes. That is a big part of the discussion.
So that is part of. Okay.
And are there two people mapping Puget Sound and Ecology?
I'm not sure if Ecology is mapping.
That's what I was thinking. I didn't, I would be surprised.
I think it's just Puget Sound.
Yeah, okay.
Again, this, sorry, Councilor Robert, the discussions that we had in 2020, 2019, Ecology said, we have enough science, we don't need to go get more. So we're just going to take the numbers that we had from 2006, 2007, 2008, and we're gonna implement based on that. And the treatment plant operators said, we think we need more science. And so since Ecology said no, we're taking that upon ourselves to do it ourselves.
Okay.
Councilor?
The funding for Corolla Engineers, its consulting test, was that a specific line item in the budget? Or is that covered in some other general?
It would have likely been under wastewater operations, professional services, which the council wouldn't see a breakdown, unless you requested it, a detailed breakdown of that.
I just want to work it out.
Yeah, it would have been covered by wastewater operating.
So Jeff, will this be part of the climate action plan? Is this included in that work or not?
This is not included in that part of the climate action plan, no.
I would expect it to be. It's not, it's pollution is important, but it doesn't relate directly to climate action stuff to talk about. We now get this. It's definitely something we gotta look at then.
And I, I really appreciate Jeff and his leadership in this, working with Ecology and that group for many, many years. This is very important, especially on municipal front. As Jeff mentioned, that this is an A source that's identified is wastewater treatment plants. But as we know, we have very high standards on what we can put out into the Puget Sound. And so the city, we have an interest to identify other areas that this is coming from and, and help to make those changes. And I really appreciate Jeff working with the University of Washington on this, to have an additional data point, noting that the one data point may not have been all of the information needed.
Jeff, just a quick question. Based on your knowledge of our current wastewater treatment plant and the layout and its capabilities, would, if the standards, if sometimes standards might be dropping for nutrient loading, are we able to tweak the plan to meet something? Or are we operating right now at the most efficient point and anything else is gonna require some upgrades?
We will be able to do some tweaking. That's what Corolla is gonna present when we get into that at the end of April, the first part of May. They're finalizing the report right now. Chuck and Jim are reviewing the report and so we'll have some options. I mean, our nutrient loading right now, our nitrogen discharge into the Puget Sound is really fairly low. It's like four or five milligrams per liter. That's pretty low compared to a lot of other jurisdictions.
Yeah.
But it's going to grow as we get more and more people aligned. You just can't help that. But there are some, a few minor ways we can optimize our treatment plant. And we've budgeted for it. Our utility rate study might even allude to that. You might see something in the utility rate study. If you look close enough on some of the monies that we're gonna be spending in the upcoming years to do nutrient optimization.
Yeah, I've got a lot of experience in the construction of wastewater treatment plants. And Corolla Engineers is really one of the very best in the world at what they do. So we have a good partner there for our pollution.
This is an item that will be of high importance and much talked about over the next, over the upcoming years, in particular for the jurisdictions that will be increased, severely increasing their density with recent housing bills, where their treatment plants have been sized for certain, certain load, especially if the nutrient change, level changes. Upgrades will be needed. City Tacoma, some of those meetings indicated, I can't remember, the 20 to 20 million dollar for some, for individual treatment plants needing to be upgraded. And so Jeff and I have had policy discussions about where does that cost go? Who pays for that? And how can, if we're working on affordable housing, who's paying for that cost for the, for the new construction? And so these are some of the things that in the future, we may need to discuss at the legislative level of funding for municipalities in order to keep up with this.
And if that will include talking about general facilities charge, which will also be a great study discussion coming up. If you're talking right now, we're about $10,000 per ERU, but you have to increase that because we have to do a massive nutrient reduction capital project. And that significantly increases your GFC, that you want to have low-income housing and affordable housing, then who's paying for that? Right now, we're set up that the developer pays for that.
That also might, yeah. That also might spin into some code changes on landscaping. I mean, that's not, again, we've got point sources and you've got non-point sources. And so everybody's lawns are what we call non-point sources. We may need to look at that at some point and say, you know, if you're gonna be building a new house, we put in drill color in stuff versus lawns, which require a lot, not only fertilizers, but weed, weed feed stuff, which is also not good. So, and it uses a whole lot of water, because Jeff can attest, that summertime, the wells drop significantly. And I can guarantee you, most of that water's going on people's lawns. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of other things that we could be thinking about as well. I mean, the wastewater treatment plant's easy in the fact that it's a point source. You can work on its technology, but getting people to maybe not plant so many lawns or having developers not allowed to put them in, but something else in that that might be a thought.
And that's part of future advocacy work that likely will need to be done on behalf of municipalities that are facing these large costs of upgrades. Because I think we believe that there's a multi-tier approach here that may not be being considered.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem, for taking over in my absence. Jeff, did you get what you needed from?
Yes, just a presentation.
Great, all right. Well, thank you so much for that report. Really appreciate it. So in the interest of time, we're gonna move right along to Creative Endeavor Grant Awards. And this report is from our city court, Josh Stecker.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Council. So what this report is, every year we do the Creative Endeavor Grant Program. The Arts Commission reviews applications for funding of artistic endeavors and allocates money for that. This year, in the new biennial budget, we had intended to include a mention of the $35,000 that we allocate for the grant program in creating the new biennial budget. That got overlooked and it wasn't specifically called out. I think Council knows about the program and intended for that to be in there. So we've been operating as though that $35,000 is there. This year, we really advertised the grants pretty heavily. They went out in the mayor's gigabyte and we did a lot of promotion of the grant opportunities. And as a result of that, we got almost $85,000 in total requests from organizations and artists in the community. We'll get to the list here in a minute. You can see all, all of the different endeavors that applied. The Arts Commission met and they reviewed all of the applications and they came up with how they would, how they recommended that we allocate the $35,000 that was budgeted. And we took that allocation list and met with the mayor and the city administrator and talked about how far that went and what wasn't getting funded. And our response to that was to decide to come back to Council and see if Council would be agreeable to upping the amount of the grant program this year to 50,000. The money for this program comes out of the Park's Operating Fund, but it also can be supplemented by the general fund. So there's, there's enough money in the budget to, to meet this increase. I will scroll down now to the table. Let me get my screen share up here. Sorry about that. So these are the grants that we, the applications we received. This second column from the right is the Arts Commission recommendation. And then the column on the far right is staff's increased recommendation to get to the 50,000 total. You can see the, the endeavors that we wanted to increase the funding for. There's kind of a theme here. The first two are for Peninsula Hands-on Art, which is the arts program in the schools where artists come in and work with students on art projects. Another one is the Downtown Waterfront Alliance's project to create a free coloring book that they'll distribute for the history of the city of Gig Harbor. It's kind of a fun project that we've been collaborating with them on a little bit. Harbor History Museums, Humanities in the Harbor, increasing the funding for that exhibit that they're doing. And then the Local Makers Gig Harbor Spring Market and Festival. The Makers Group is a group that we've been working with, the mayor and city administrator and I, to try to get them, get them some more exposure and more opportunities here in the city. They kind of intersect with a lot of the things that Council has identified in the strategic plan. They are bringing, you know, they're, they're bringing events and activities into the community. They're, the plan is to grow them into something that will be a tourism-type target. Local Makers Groups and that type of thing are really popular and growing. endeavor around cities across the country. And I think that if we can get our group up and going, we can get some, get some notoriety and get people coming to Gig Harbor to participate in that. Another thing is that it intersects, is we know, we heard from Council that we're concerned about, you know, the impacts of what's happening downtown with business closures and businesses transitioning. And the Makers Group was partnering with the Harbor General Store. And when the Harbor General Store closed, it impacted that group, which was having their pop-up sales in the, in the parking lot there. So this is kind of a way to kind of alleviate some of the, some of the effects of that closure. So that's, that's another big expense that we're adding to the recommendation. And I think that about sums up my report. I think these are all really worthwhile endeavors. There are all a lot of great opportunities for the community. And our recommendation is to have Council allow us to move forward with this. If Council agrees with this, we'll bring it back to the next Council meeting and have it on the consent agenda to authorize the mayor to sign these agreements. So happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you so much, Josh. Any questions from Council?
I think this is a fabulous and varied list.
Councilmember?
Yeah, I'd be interested in knowing why the local makers, the Arts Commission recommended zero. And staff decided we would give them the largest grant of all, which is probably appropriate. But what was it the Arts Commission didn't like about that program?
Yeah, I, I can elaborate on that a little bit more, Mayor, if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Okay. So the, unfortunately, when we did the Arts Commission reviews, I wasn't able to be there for that part. And I think the Arts Commission didn't quite fully understand the extent of the city's involvement in local makers and kind of what the extent of the scope was. The Arts Commission's chief concern was that the event wouldn't be able to happen in time, which I think was just more about the Arts Commission not really knowing what the event was or how much work had been done on it. Their concern was that it was too big of an event and it could never happen. And I don't, I just think the Arts Commission was not fully informed and I think that's why their decision was that way. If I had been able to be on in that meeting, I think I could have alleviated those concerns for them.
Thank you.
And Council, the Chair of the Arts Commission is, just happens to be here. If you would like to hear from her.
Yes.
I would, we don't usually allow, you know, public comment, I guess, but it's not really public comment. If you wanted to elaborate, because you were there at the meeting, for Council specifically around that, that grant.
Thank you very much. I, what Josh says is true to an extent. We were surprised at the amount of that grant request. And we're, we're very concerned. I personally have experience in running festivals. Excuse me.
I'm like, do a cricket. Always. Somebody's theory.
Absolutely. I, I know about running festivals. I have started two music festivals and ran one for twenty-five years. And to try to start something that's as optimistic as this is, in just two months, is a formidable task. It's not that we don't appreciate what they're doing, because we do and we see that there's a tremendous need for it. Their grant requests included things like money to print business cards and letterhead and things that we simply didn't feel were what we should, what we should be spending taxpayers' money on. And, and just, just the fact that to try to pull off what they say is a fourteen thousand dollar project in less than two months. It, you know, if they would think of perhaps moving it to November or something like that. Or something that, that gives them a little more timeframe. We really aren't privileged to all that they've been doing with the city. We did understand that they've been working closely with some of the city administration. But compared to what some of the others are, are, have experience with, some of the other of our grant recommendations have experience with, we were just a little concerned about spending taxpayers' money for a grant made of that.
Thank you very much for that, Charlie. Come for a look here, your hand up.
The only thing I wanted to hear from the Chair.
Oh, great. Councilmember.
And I guess I'm not familiar with the spring market and festival that they're doing. I'm more familiar with the monthly makers markets that they've been doing over the past couple of years, I think, that they seem really well organized.
So Josh, can you explain?
So what's the difference?
Yeah, so this, this event is, is kind of like an enlarged version of their pop-up events that they've been doing down at the, down at the general market downtown. So it will have a lot more booths, a lot more makers will be there. But the focus is going to be more towards youth and kids. It's going to be on the Saturday before Mother's Day, so that kind of the target is bring your kids up here. There's a lot of free things to do. They can create crafts and projects and learn how to make different types of art things. Kind of focused towards mom for Mother's Day and, and giving, you know, like an outlet for kids and parents to have something to do that's artistic and educational for them. There's going, they have plans to have performers that they've already reached out to. And I think they already have some contracts for in place. They are working with food trucks and other kinds of vendors like that to make it kind of a more of a, an event where you can go and do a lot of things rather than just shop at booths. So it's, it's very, it's gonna be very similar to what they've been doing at the, at the Harbor General Store, but just on a much bigger scale, I think.
Do we know where this tape would take place?
This is on, this is on the Civic Center Green, right, Josh?
Yeah, Civic Center Green, yeah. That, that's another thing that kind of interests the city because we don't, we haven't done a lot of events up here. And I think we're kind of interested to see if there's more potential for using the space up here. Not that we want to take people away from downtown, but we have space up here that, you know, is a little more easy for people to access during summer months. And maybe kind of diversifying where we hold our events out. So it could be an interesting test case for us to, to see how that works with our Parks Department and operational staff and all that.
Councilmember?
So Josh, are you asking us to, at this meeting, approve that increased spending?
What we're planning to do is just come back on the consent agenda at the next Council meeting. So this will just be on there to approve. Unless there's any objections, that's what we'll plan to do.
I'm certainly in favor of it.
Okay. I'm seeing many nodding heads, at least five.
I really want to thank Josh and Tiffany for helping put this forward and Charlie and the whole Arts Commission. It's not easy to receive that many requests, especially for more money than they have budgeted and to go through and evaluate them. So very much want to thank the Arts Commission for their time and their recommendation to us. And perhaps they'll be happy that there's more funding for it and for the arts.
Love it, yeah. Keep, keep that up. We're, we're gonna hold you to that next year.
Councilmember?
So, one, thanks for the background and the information on this. On makers, just curious on any of these, so they will request funding for certain things for their particular event? If for whatever reason they don't spend them, then say if they only spent five thousand on those things that we said were off the hours. That's all they, we've seen is a five thousand, not the seventy-five hundred, right?
Right.
And if things for some reason cannot pull off the event and it doesn't happen, then, then the money would not be spent, yeah.
And then would we have the opportunity, would we allocate those funds to other requesters or not?
It would likely just stay in the fund for next time, unfortunately. Because these events will occur at different times during the year and it'd be very difficult to, to reallocate.
Yeah. Especially if there's a permit deadline that they have to meet for the event. They'd have to already have that in the works a lot of the times, yeah.
For LTAC, we have kind of a postmortem after the event. The city asks them, well, how'd it go? What'd you spend it on? And what was your financial, your P and L for that event? And we do the same for this. Is that right?
Josh, what is the after with this in the contract?
It's very similar. We asked them to provide us, you know, any kind of like marketing materials or, you know, copies of programs or something like that, that, that shows that the event happened. And then they're only reimbursed for things that they can provide a receipt for. So it's, it's not like we just write them a check. We need to, we need to see that they actually spent the money on something that's related to their event.
Great. Thank you, Council. Over to this board at the next Council meeting. We'll move right on to code enforcement program discussion. I know this is a really important discussion. And if we run out of time, which we probably will, we can, can we bring this back to the very next study session so that we can finish this in?
We certainly can.
Rapid time. Okay. Okay, I'll turn it right over to you, Carl. DeCena, Sarki, the Development Director. And Adam Logit, thank you for being here, Code Enforcement Officer.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. I'm just going to introduce what we're talking about a little bit here, then I'll turn it over to Adam Logit, Code Enforcement Officer, to sort of run through the details. But if you'll all recall, we, a couple of months ago, I think we had, we had a discussion about code enforcement. We brought an update on statistics and sort of what Adam was going to be working on in the, in his new role as full-time code enforcement officer. And at that meeting, Council had expressed some interest in us exploring options for code enforcement. Looking at our process, looking at the code, looking at civil penalties. And then bringing back some ideas and recommendations for maybe how we could potentially improve our processes. So today, that's what we'll, we plan to explore with you all is some idea around our, our current, our current process. And then maybe how we can, we can improve that. Also looking at consolidating our code. If you'll recall, when we met before, we, one of, one of our concerns is, is how code enforcement is sort of spread out across the code. And it's difficult to administer. So a consolidated code section is something else that we want to talk with you all about. And then finally, we want to get some direction from Council on civil penalties and kind of get a temperature for what that range looks like. What is, what is Council's desire, where that, where that stands. So we'll provide some, some examples of what, of what we like and what we've seen out in the, in the state and what we think might work here in King Harbor. So with that, and finally, once we have our discussion, what we would, you know, what we would like to do. And maybe it sounds like we'll be coming back for another study session, so we may not get to that point. But ultimately, what we would like to do is bring back maybe a draft ordinance, maybe two draft ordinances or three that we can sort of present as options and have a discussion around those prior to bringing back something to a Council meeting that we could adopt. So that's, that's how we're looking at the process. And of course, you can change that process during this discussion and we'll go make it happen. But with that, I'll turn it over to Adam to run through the details.
Thanks.
Take it away.
Yeah, so thank you all for having me and for creating this position. It's awesome. So I'm like, we're all here now, right? So we, we made it.
So I say, big step.
Big step. So code enforcement, City Harbor, always been kind of a little bit of contentious conversation that we've always had. Trying to figure out a way to educate our citizens about our code, why we have a code, how the code works for them, how it works for us. Community development, police, courts, getting all of the departments together. So over the course of the last couple of years, tried to refine what it is that City Harbor, the needs of the citizens and what it is that our code enforcement needs to be robust. And so on the screen here, and I think it was also in your packages, packets, yeah. This is a kind of just real quick breakdown of how we are processing code enforcement complaints. They come through what we call a code enforcement active request, which can either be citizens up front at the counter here at the building or through website. And that gets sent to our email and we kind of filter it out to determine if it's inside the city limits. If it's not, then we refer it out to Pierce County. Good rapport with Pierce County Code Enforcement. They're the, I know all their officers around the area. So we're able to communicate pretty quickly like what's going on and we have to send them code cases. And then if it's inside the city limits, we start an investigation. Typically, an investigation is real quick. It's land zoning, use our GIS systems. Are we working as a current project? So are there permits involved with it? Has anybody ever heard of this? Is this problem nuisance property that we've heard about before? So typically, we try to go do a site and a knock and talk. In typically, that's where we can determine if there's actually a violation. And if there is a violation, yes, and you'll see, we kind of just go down the flow. It's a pretty self-explanatory. What is a little bit different in this that's not actually in our code and we haven't implemented it yet? The stipulated agreement. Right now, how I've been going about compliance or gaining compliance. And ultimately, compliance is exactly what we want. We don't really even want to get to notice of violations and civil penalties. We want just compliance. And if anything, the compliance leads to education. So the stipulated agreement is nice because currently, we just kind of have a nice guy letter. It's in, if the citizen considers me nice, it's me just politely asking them to come into compliance at that point, right? But we don't really have anything in our code that really holds their feet to the fire when they say, well, I want to comply, but this may take me a year. We don't really have a year. And the stipulated agreement has come about as discussions with staff of allowing them to enter into a contract with the city that we're saying, we're not going to issue notice of violation or civil penalties at this point. But you're agreeing that you would waive, you know, an appeal and that you agree that you have committed this violation and that we are going to move forward to correct it, whether that could be a critical area, issue, wetland, trees, what have you. So in, in this, it's, oh, sorry.
So the stipulated agreement, if, okay, I've cut down trees. And I didn't know I needed a permit and you come and you say, I shouldn't have cut them down. I say, oh my God, I'm so sorry. Do you make an agreement with me that I will then plant trees within a certain amount of time? And avoid the penalties then? Is that?
Yep.
What we're talking about is a stipulated agreement?
Yeah, at that point, that's, yeah, if, you know, the trees, it's in violation of code, I explain it. Hey, here's what's kind of going on. This is the code section. And by the way, this is an avenue for you to correct, it'd be a corrective action. And at that point, I'd be able to present like a stipulated agreement. What that language looks like, we don't quite know yet. Later in the slides, you'll see some of that language. And at that point, the property owner, citizen could enter into it. Now, they could say, no, I don't want to enter anything. I'm not going to sign anything. I'd rather just take this all the way. So then at that point, we just go straight to the notice of violation. So.
And I would say, just to add to that, right, the way it works right now is that typically, if somebody does want to come into compliance, then, you know, they'd have to come in to get their permits. And so then we start working through the permit process. And that's what then, the code case stays open while we're in the permit process. The permit process can take forever sometimes, right? We get these iterations back and forth. You have to, you have to have some irrigation. We're talking about trees and maybe they don't want, they can't or don't want to put irrigation in. And we end up in this back and forth in the permit process. Meanwhile, the code case is just, it's just languishing, right? It's languishing and we never, then we eventually get to maybe a notice of violation to try and force their hand to get the permit done. But the stipulated agreement would give us that, that happy medium that, that, you know, before we even get to that point to say, here's, here's, here's your contract. This is what you've agreed to. You don't get to that point, then we move on.
Council has talked in the past about trees being different than others. Someone builds a deck, they can take it down. Somebody paints their house whatever color. They can repaint it, but with trees, when they take those down.
They're gone.
They're gone. And so I think that under the stipulated agreement, would it be potentially different for trees?
Yeah, and that, and we probably shouldn't have used trees as an example. We should have used trees.
That was just a warning.
We've talked about this, that trees, you know, we're kind of, we're sort of waiting for the Urban Forest Management Program to catch up. To give us some better guidance on what that will look like. So that will be something a bit different. And later on in the presentation, Adam, when we get into talking about civil penalties, we wanted to discuss the idea of infractions with Council as well. Because that's something that we could apply upfront. And say you took, you took a couple of trees down illegally, you should have known better. Here's your, here's your ticket for doing that. And now you're into the code compliance process as well. So there's sort of two parts. So we have, we know that was one of Council's concerns and we have looked into that and addressed it. So that's coming.
Just a quick question, and we may address this when we go further on. But how often do you end up going further in this process? I mean, is there a point where eighty percent of it ends here and you have a small amount? Or do a lot of them go through this whole process?
You mean getting to compliant, sorry, Adam.
Well, not getting to compliance, but where you have to go through what you think would be a stipulated agreement, those type of things. How often?
Well, because we haven't used necessarily a stipulated agreement, I would say that gaining compliance is probably, you're probably Well, because we haven't used necessarily a stipulated agreement, I would say that gaining compliance is probably, you're probably right, it's probably about eighty percent. It depends on the severity of the violation, and I guess the rapport that I'm able to build upon initial conversation with the individual, and what the project is. Now, if it's large development, to have permits, a house is being built, we're probably going to notice a violation at that point. There really is no, like, they've already clearly extended too far, but if it's just a simple mistake, and it's an educational thing that we can work through, I'd rather take the educational route and help them get to the point of compliance. The stipulated agreement, kind of how we have it now is more just like a nice guy letter, it's, hey, you violated these codes, here's what you need to do, corrective action could be fifteen, thirty, ninety days, please contact me at your earliest convenience, so we can talk about this. And then, it's a charm at that point. At that point, to let them work through it, and if they have questions, they have to come in and get permits, then I leave it to the community development department staff to help them through that process. Yeah, but we never want to get to, we never want to get to notice of violation, I try really hard not to get to that.
And you rarely do get to notice of violation, Adam, you have a really good job of giving them to compliance prior to that.
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I was curious, and I.
Yeah.
Sounds like you've got a great plan.
Yeah, the.
A lot of charm.
Yeah, the stipulated agreement is just a.
So not on Mondays, is a good thing not to talk to you, right?
Carl has a charm one of these days.
I think there was another question over here.
Yeah, how often do we ever ask somebody to tear something out, like they've built a, a deck into a wetland, or they're building on private, not private, but public right-of-way? I mean, I know we've had, we've had some of that occur recently, finding out the people who built on, on the right-of-way. Do we just say, gosh, shouldn't have done that, well, just draw the right-of-way around your deck, and they're gone, or?
No, no, no.
Yeah.
Um, I wanna say, that probably happens about, probably about three times a year, we'll have something that does actually need to come down. In, I know pretty early on, if that's going to be the case, say it's a shed in a setback, right-of-way, work done in our right-of-way, something built that's over our, or on our road, that needs to come down. Clearly, if it's on our road, it's going to have to come down. But I would say maybe like three times a year, we have that, and those are, can be tough conversations, 'cause they've put a lot of time and effort and money into those things.
Yeah.
That's where, that's where the educational portion of it comes, understanding their setbacks, what's allowed in those zones. We have quite, you guys know, we have quite a few brand-new homes, new families, new residents of City Harbor, and getting them to where they can understand our code is where this, we probably never actually have to even get to stipulated agreement, right? If they're all talking to each other, and the HOAs are involved, and can police themselves. But, as far as like removing and demolishing, haven't had to do that too much, but yeah, it's, it's pretty rare.
And I don't wanna steal your thunder, but Adam does obviously a great job with being able to work proactively with folks, but he also has additional ideas, and I know we've talked about HOA fair in the council, in the budget, and that's something that Adam will be instrumental in, in working with, so that people know the codes, who to go to if something happens, so that we can identify issues quickly, so that if someone does have to tear something out, hopefully, it's not too much of a financial burden to do it properly.
So make sure when we have those fairs, that we not only have existing HOAs, but the ones that are still not HOAs yet, but like developments, 'cause I don't think they do a very good job. I know we've get quite a few issues up, but we want to buy, oh, where is that? It's the new one that's just by the.
You talked about Burnham at the.
Yeah.
At the crossover with the Edmond Trail.
Yeah.
I'm seeing a podcast guest too, to educate the channel, um, like about our code. Oh yeah, it's on my, you're on my list, by the way, for, for now. I haven't even talked to you about it yet, but.
We're gonna be a star.
It'll be on an extra charm day. Turn on the charm for, yeah, extra charm for that.
So, I, yeah, the stipulated agreement is just, it's an idea that we have, it's just, it's an additional tool that we, as the staff in the city, can use. It's not a heavy hammer at that point, and it gives them the opportunity to educate themselves, us to talk to them, but also, if it doesn't go well, yeah, it gives them a guideline, and they clearly understand what the end result would actually be, which would be the notice of violation, up to potentially civil penalties.
And a lot of jurisdictions use something similar, for voluntary compliance agreement, or something, they call them different things.
Yeah. Yeah, voluntary compliance is what we see a lot, agreements, and that's actually where we kind of forgot this idea, is we started to see this quite a bit in some of our comparable municipalities. Just, yes.
Can I go back, I'm just wondering, you mentioned at the very beginning, when the complaints come in, you figure out if they're nuisance or what. About what percentage of the account, called-in complaints or email complaints end up in that nuisance category, and how do you decide?
Uh, I don't have the twenty.
I may not need the percentages, but.
What do you want to look at?
I'm trying to figure out how many, how you handle the people who call in and say, you know, she was loud last night, or she, she's had too many cars in the driveway, or those kinds of complaints, what do you, how do you put the charm on for those?
Uh, I.
How do you handle those?
He's already knocked on your door.
No, I said, with your house, handle it.
We, we receive quite a few citizen complaints, they do come through the phone. Our staff over at community, in community development that receive those, they're amazing, they do actually quite a bit of triage for me, whereas sometimes I don't receive those phone calls, 'cause they just know right away whether or not it's related to a Title Eight or zoning code. As far as determining if it's a nuisance or not, loud cars, anything that disturbs public peace, public morals, you know, dilapidated cars, dilapidated houses, it's kind of, we're aware that these things exist, and they could be a nuisance, and that's where we go, and that's, we get to the site of knock and talk to actually determine whether or not.
Okay.
Simply taking it over the phone, we encourage them to go to our website to fill out the action form, to give us quite a bit of information. We try not to take code enforcement complaints just over the phone anonymously, 'cause then everyone could just be driving around and just calling whatever in they don't like. And when, when we encourage them to do that, we find that a lot of the times is absolutely, we're happy to look into it. Unfortunately, you know, right now is staff time, and there's code cases, we take them as they are, unless it's like, trees are actively being cut down, or like buildings on fire or something, right, like major like life, health, safety emergencies. But we encourage them to go on and fill out the form, and a lot of times, we find that getting to that point is where they stop the complaint. And it's not that we're trying to discourage citizens from complaining, 'cause normally, the complaints are really valid, and they're about the community, and we want to know what we can fix and help, but sometimes, it is just actually just complaining. So, we can get them to not do that as much.
Adam, and I'm, I'm bearing my time as well, but question for you, so sometimes people, lack of a better term, fall into hard luck. You know, maybe their health isn't great, so they're not able to keep up their yard the way they used to, and grasses broke tall, or things are occurring, or, and that. Do we have, when you're out there talking to some people at work, if that's occurring, that we have some opportunity, you should share some resources with them, or things like that, or?
Yeah, we've.
Economic hard times, or whatever that might be.
Yeah, we've, we've had a couple of cases where that, that has occurred, and I don't, I wouldn't say that we necessarily have a lot of immediate resources. I kind of reach out to the police department that do have crisis intervention and crisis response, or social work help, and just because of my background and having that rapport with the patrol and Chief Bucy, they're able to come and back me up and help in those situations. That's something that we take into consideration when I'm out there in the field, that's why we get to this point of violation determined. Yes, it's a violation, but are there other things that may be compounding this? We don't want always the code to just be this brick wall, we have to learn to work with our citizens and figure out what steps we can do to help them at least, like, to get to compliance. And if that's, I've gone to Carl and said, hey, I need an additional thirty days on this, or gone to Katrina and explained like, hey, here's kind of the hard times, here's the hardship, that they have to do this, can we give extensions, can we look at these programs? So, code enforcement is never just, this is the code, this is what you shall do, we need to be able to be flexible in, in that.
Yeah, even though this process, this flow chart looks linear.
Yeah, this flow, this flow chart looks very like strict, it's, yeah, it can be.
I really, I really like your philosophy on this, I really like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's lots of opportunities, and we're, you know, we're very lenient, but at the same time, we, we do wanna get something that's what we're here for, is to try and figure out something that's a little more bookended, you know, and we, so guy, you know, we have a little bit more guidance from, from the code to, to help Adam do his job better. In the, in the interest of time, the one thing I think we would.
Consolidation.
Is talk about, well, I think, if, if I could just ask council, is, and I get the sense that council is probably on board with the idea of consolidating the code into one chapter of code enforcement. Okay, so we'll, we'll just kind of, we'll take, take that and kind of run with that idea, and we'll bring back some ideas, some examples of what that would look like. If we could jump ahead to the infraction targets, and talk about that just briefly, I think, I'd love to hit on that before the end of the meeting here, if we could. Keep going, Josh.
Yeah, a few more.
Right, so, yeah. Could you zoom in on that at all, Josh?
Let me see what I can do, it's a PowerPoint, so it's gonna be difficult.
Part of your.
Yeah, these are not part of the packets. I know, I'm sorry, no, these are not part of the packets, yeah.
Carl, would you and Adam also like official direction on the stipulated agreement, to get started on that?
We would like that too, yeah.
What do you all feel, I saw a lot of nodding heads, but what do you all feel about that stipulated agreement idea?
I love that idea. Yeah, I am, yeah.
Then capitalize.
Thank you, Mary, I forgot that, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Then there's things between now and the next study session that you can just, you can actually get going on.
Yes, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, great.
So, we wanted to bring up code enforcement penalties. Currently, right now, the way our code is, it's pretty spread out, and that's kind of where this, the, the topic of consolidation comes from. But also, what's also spread out is the way civil penalties and infractions are kind of doled out within our code. It's not very explicit, like, it's very, or specific to a particular title. And what we kind of wanna do with this, this is a good example, I believe this is Semamish.
Semamish, yeah.
Um, they built just a table, and this accounts for all the code for their city, with the exception of building a fire. And that's also something, when we go look to consolidate the code, it kind of leaves out building a fire, they kind of, they have their own world that they live in. And, yeah.
Well, to an extent.
To an extent.
To an extent.
So, what you see up here is just an example that we liked, that was Semamish built a table, and what they do is they just call out everything within days and kind of a scale, and Carl kind of brought that up, is we're kind of looking for, you know, there's like the really extreme, where we've seen, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars or such for a single tree, down to five dollars for, you know, tall grass. And we're trying to find that happy median in there, and this is just something that tells you, you know, the infraction, what a stop work order is, non-compliance, what that looks like, violation for an approved permit, so they already have an approved permit, but now they're violating that. And what I liked about Semamish was it was just very straightforward, you didn't have to go to that particular title to go find it, and then go through this process. It was just, this is what it is when this occurs.
What we, what Adam, what Adam and I don't like about this, so I'll bring that up, is that we don't like the range necessarily. So one to fifteen days, a hundred to two hundred fifty dollars per day, we, we feel like that should just be one number, you know, we just pick a number so that we're not, it's not put on, it's not discretionary, it's not discretionary, yeah, so we don't have to put that on Adam or the director, or whoever, to have to make that choice, it should just be, this is what it is.
It seems like the same thing would be true with infraction and stop work order, that those would.
Those are up too, exactly.
Yeah.
They should be a single.
Make them a set, static, be, you know, that we sort of decide on, we don't have to decide on those numbers today, but what we wanted to get was a temperature from council on.
Sure.
How, how, you know, how intense do we want to be? Right now, we're, we're at a hundred, you know, we do a hundred dollars a day for a notice of violation. So if you, if you have violated the code, or zoning code anyway, a hundred dollars, it's gonna be a hundred dollars a day, once we get to that.
Once you actually.
Once we get to that civil penalty point, and so that can go, can go back. A hundred dollars a day compared to most jurisdictions is pretty low, I would say. And a lot of jurisdictions that don't use this type of a table will use something more like, it'll start at a hundred dollars a day. Maybe a week later, it goes to two hundred dollars a day, to three a year, and kind of this elevator idea.
Josh, can we go down one, please?
One or two.
In the slides?
It's, it's a little bit challenging to set up that, because for, let's say, a homeowner, a hundred dollars a day is a lot. If it's a big corporation, that's not even the cost of, you know, donuts for their people at a meeting every day.
True.
So they would laugh at that, say, yeah, bring it on, 'cause, you know, we're, so, maybe.
Yeah. But that's where the stipulated agreement is, is helpful, because that's the, that's the carrot to get them into, into compliance.
Can you go to the next one, Josh?
So you can say, well, if you get into the stipulated agreement, we'll waive all of these civil penalties. You might have had an infraction or something upfront that you have to pay, but we'll waive the civil penalties if you get into the stipulated agreement, and if you follow through on the stipulated agreement. So that's how, that's a way of getting to compliance, so sometimes, higher civil penalty numbers act as that.
Incentive.
Incentive to get in base.
Yeah.
As a stipulated agreement, doesn't.
Right.
And I would note too, that with, with civil penalties, what we're talking about is when, at the point, the violator gets past the corrective action or no longer is in compliance with the notice of violation or has civil penalties. In some instances, where we've looked at, is what is a penalty that's just immediate, and I think that's kind of what, was that what we're talking about? 'Cause we talked about.
Infraction.
Infraction.
Back to the idea that you were mentioning earlier.
Yeah, so, real quickly, infractions. Currently, I cannot write infractions, I no longer have my commission after leaving the police department, so there has been discussion with the Chief Bucy about a limited commission and what that looks like. But in order to do that, we don't wanna go through the whole regular role of bringing the police department back in and restarting that, so.
But also with a limited commission, it expands Adam's role to, you know, junk vehicles, or writing parking tickets, or things like that, and that's not what we want.
No, no, right, no, that's, that.
Yeah, what, what we're looking for is being able to write civil infractions, and what we've learned is that it typically has to come with a type of limited commission or special commission that's through the city, and it's worked into the job description of that particular position, then it doesn't need, uh.
Don't need a limited commission.
Don't need a limited commission if it's built into the job description. Um, so, we're having some preliminary talks, I've had some with Chief Bucy to kind of get that, because I've seen a lot of municipalities that use that, that's like the very first, there's no stipulated agreement for this, you have cut down trees, these trees are not going to come back, here's this, or you know.
Here's a ticket.
Uh, here's a ticket, or.
And they can dispute that in the court then, rather than going through the hearing examiner appeal process.
Yeah, there's no appeal process for certain ones, and we would choose, you know, within our titles, like where we would want to see that happen. And then, but that's the difference between infractions and civil penalties. Civil penalties would be, hey, civil agreement, you didn't agree to it, we're moving on, or you got to the notice of violation, you didn't do anything, also didn't appeal, you have civil penalties. I think it's kind of what's been occurring here, is it's a long process to ever get to that point.
So, really quick then, and to Councilor Rotenberg's point that, that he made there, I don't know if anybody heard it, but what he had said was, the way our code is currently set up for civil penalties, it's oftentimes cheaper to pay the civil penalty than it might be to actually address the problem. And so that's why we're saying, yeah, so when you look at codes across the state, sometimes you see these really big numbers, and you think, oh my goodness, they're crazy, they're never gonna get twenty-five thousand dollars for, you know, taking down a couple of trees. Well, it's not the point of getting the money, the point is getting them to fix the problem oftentimes, so.
Which is a communication issue too.
It is, it is.
I apologize, Adam.
Nope, no problem.
They could have another experience factor, just talk about, so, we talked about corporations or things like that, perhaps continuing doing the same things, they have one project, they've done the same act that was against our code, they have another project, they do the same act against our code.
They repeat the, they're repeating.
Oh, repeated, I see.
Yeah, don't talk about it tonight, just so you can put it down as a, kind of talk about.
Yeah, something to think about, okay.
That was one thing that I was thinking too, was on the, the, like, a hundred dollar fine for X, it's repeated every fourteen days, that you haven't done anything about it.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking that every time you have a project, you just build it into your project plan, like, I know this is a cost of your own business, we're just gonna keep doing it because that's what we can get you out of.
Right.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
We don't want that.
That's a, that's a, that's a really good point.
No.
So, on the flow chart you had earlier, there was those, those yellow crosses? And it was a violation determined, was the first point of fee, and that was before the stipulated agreement?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a good point, we did, we didn't touch on it, we're sort of.
We didn't, yeah.
It's a, it's a good point, we did, we didn't touch on it, we're sort of running out of time.
Okay, no, 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 and.
But the idea behind that first cross is, is also a new um feature in the process that we were thinking about, which is a, um, an investigation fee. So some way to recoup some of the cost of staffing time.
Some, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right now, we don't do that at all except for permitting and there's a couple of ways we can do that.
Yeah.
We think one is through this, an investigation fee that's just sort of a flat fee, once you get to violation, we can do, we can say, okay, here's your, here's your fee just for the, for causing this violation to happen. The other way we could do it is we could, we could track out its time on that, up to that point. And the third way we could do it, which we really like, is something that the building department currently does and that is that they require double, um, they require um double permit, double the permit fee to fix the problem.
Or work without, work without permits, when you come in for the permit, there, you get, you have to pay double for the building.
So your building permit is.
Because you already started the project and so probably almost already done by the time we catch it.
Yeah.
So then you have to come in and get permits after the fact, so they charge an additional fee and that's kind of.
That's an interesting.
That's where this uh yellow marker at yes was, was that it could be handed to the point when they come up to the counter to get their permits, which would be part of the corrective action I've asked them to do, that we capture some cost for the amount of staff time that it took to get to this point and some of these we just don't have.
I think you wanna do that versus trying to do time account.
We didn't talk about time accounting and.
It'd be a.
Adam didn't like that idea either.
Yeah.
It is a nightmare.
It is a nightmare, yeah, yeah.
Spent forty years of time.
Yeah, bill of whole hours is not long.
That sounds like a good idea, this double look.
Yeah, and something we need to run through Daniel still, some of these things we still have to run by Daniel,
Yeah.
Yeah.
But um we just kind of wanted to come today to get, um, because he's some nodding heads and it seems like we are getting that.
Sure.
I think you're on the right.
Yeah.
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 Sleep nodding.
So specifically, Carl, about the, does council like that table kind of idea?
It's easy.
Yes, I do, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, then like you said, yeah.
It needs to be just to understand for the residents.
It needs to be simplified and not have that judgment like, oh, I like this guy, so he's only getting hundreds with this guy,
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
but he was eating his time, so he's getting a two.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I talked about that, very scenario, yeah.
Yeah.
Because that person put the charm on, but the other person didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
So then is that something you can get working on too then in the meantime?
Yes, we can get working on that immediately, yeah.
Great, and we'll make sure we restructure if we, if we need to, we'll think of the next study session so we can dedicate a, a good portion to.
Yeah.
I would really like to dedicate a lot of time to finish this.
Okay. We know that this has been a, this is a start, stop, and a start and stop, yeah, every other priorities, but we don't think for staff,
This is very interesting. Yeah. At least you can keep going.
Especially for staff, we want them to be able to have this direction, move forward.
Yeah.
And I know council will feel good about having the, the code updated so that we're applying that appropriately.
Well, I think there's a lot of citizens who are asking for it as well.
Well, it's transparency, that's what we're building into, it's very transparent, you know exactly what's gonna happen.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
If you don't do that, we have outreach opportunities, I think that's a good thought.
Yeah, right now, if a citizen wanted to go in and find out what, what penalties are for certain violations, it'd be almost, it's almost impossible for us in some cases.
We have, it's really important.
Yeah.
Right.
We have to, we call Daniel to.
Yeah, just trying to find the, the most consistent, the most consistent way to apply code compliance for City Harbor,
But different run this person.
That's not, it doesn't need to be, again, heavy-handed, it just needs to be consistent and fair and then educational at that
Well. Yeah.
And then, and easy to administer for staff.
And inspires folks to do it the right way.
Do it the right way, the first time.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, right.
And the brochure that you included in the packet, I look at that and like, even if we had something like that with the table on it, uh, here's the fees,
Yeah.
Yeah.
When someone comes and gets a permit or a process, you can hand them that brochure and say, oh, by the way, here's the twenty-five thousand dollars for that tree over there.
Yeah.
Yeah. We attach the bill to the.
A little free education.
Yeah, we like the brochure for that reason, because right now, Adam goes up, he leaves, he leaves a calling card on there, it's the doorstep, they call him and that's usually.
For now, yeah, I really like it. This is a, this is a lot nicer.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it just explains a little more.
Well, it explains why we're there and like the point is, the point is not to slap your hand for doing something wrong,
Yeah.
it is because there's a vision, there's a way that we want our community to act and be and look. So at, at least that the brochure just informs them, so by the time they actually do call me or invite me back to their home to have that discussion, they're more educated about it and I find that it like it goes a long way over the poor, so.
Broke my way, come on.
So I'd like to thank you two for making the code compliance officer full-time, I think that was long overdue and I would like.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'd like to say, I'm really happy we got you, Adam, as our code compliance. I can't think of anybody better to do this, you're just like, this is awesome.
I really appreciate it, thank you, he's a charmer.
No.
Snake charmer.
Dad jokes.
Dad jokes are good.
Well, thank you, council, for giving some interim directions so that we can have more come back and.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thanks for staying, Lee.
Yes, thank you, thank you all and with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do adjourn.
Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone, thanks so much.
Yeah. Yeah, really.